All right, let's get going. Good morning, everyone. This is the November ninth, two thousand and twenty hearing for the Executive Appointments Committee. I am Councilmember Chris Burnett, Vice Chair of the Committee. We are joined by Councilmember Stokes, member of the Committee, Councilmember Clark of the fourteenth District and member of the Committee, Councilmember Slifer of the Fifth District, member of the Committee, and Councilmember Cohen of the First District and member of the Committee. We're also joined by staff from the Office of the Council President, Office of the Mayor, and our Committee staff person is Marguerite Curran. Today, we will review several nominations to be members of the Baltimore City Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety. A few housekeeping items. We're going to ask everyone to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak so that we have this on the record properly. Speak slowly and clearly, and when you're finished, please mute yourself again. Before we go, okay, before we hear from our nominees, are there any panelists present who would like to testify on behalf of any of the nominees? Or speak to the commission? I don't see anyone here.
Yeah.
There we go. Kaylin Young.
Sorry, I was trying to get my camera on. How you doing, everyone? Kaylin Young from your office of the Council President. First and foremost, just want to thank everybody for taking the time to be on this hearing. As you all know, this is a bill, excuse me, these nominations are the result of a city council bill seventeen dash zero zero seven six, which is a legislation that was sponsored by the Council President previously. And he worked closely with former Council President and current Mayor Jack Young. The legislation requires that the Council President nominate members to this board for the mayor to appoint, and that's why we're here today. The process that we went through to select these individuals before you today included requesting, pre-COVID, requesting applications and publishing that on the website. We received over eighty applications. And then we sifted those applications based on the criteria of the legislation, which included having individuals from each police district and also having certain individuals from with various specialties to include reentry specialists and LGBTQ specialists, et cetera. We then, after categorizing each applicant, we pulled together a team of individuals to review those applications. The people who were on that team were Ray Kelly of the Consent Decree Monitoring Team, Eric Melinkon, Chief Staff of the Baltimore Police Department, Dana Baker Shelley, Executive Director of the ACLU of Maryland, Mark Moses, victim advocate, victim witness advocate from the State's Attorney's Office, George Button, who was at the time the Chair of the CRB, and Daniel Webster, who is over at Johns Hopkins working on violence reduction. Those individuals went through the packets, and we, pre-COVID, came together in person and went through each and every application and made selections. Those selections were then sent to the full council for review. We made one change as a result of that review by the full council, and then following that, those individuals were sent to the president for final, excuse me, for for final approval prior to going to the mayor. Once the, once the president approved the recommendations of the committee and of the council, we went and had a conversation with Mayor Jack Young, who was in approval as well of these individuals before you, and made these, made the submission to this committee today. So that's the process that we went through, which wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this was a thorough process. This isn't just a group of people that the Council President or his staff selected, but instead that we got industry experts who are focused on public safety and who are working every day on this work to be a part of it, to make sure that the people that are before you are the right people. And again, we also got buy-in from Mayor Jack Young as well. So thank you all for listening, and if you have any questions, members of the committee, I'm happy to answer. The Council President would have made this little overview, but unfortunately, he was pulled to another pressing matter that just happened today. So, any questions?
Kaylin? Yeah, I just want to add to what you very well have said, that as a member of the council, we have been told explicitly by the president, who is the lead sponsor on this legislation and this organization, that one of the most important things about it is that when the consent decree ends, now that's not coming soon, but when it does, this is the group in place that will oversee, will continue to oversee police and community activities and to be the guardian angels of that legacy for citizens of Baltimore City. So it's, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and let me just say, normally, a consent decree would include having a group like this, but because the city council had already passed legislation to do this, it hadn't been included in the consent decree. So this work that we're fulfilling today is what would traditionally be part of a normal consent decree. It's just not part of ours because we're doing it now.
Kaylin, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Current President Young, I mean, stop. My question is, because of how this is, if we look at the whole city and making sure there are people from each one of the council districts, try to have some balance there, because when you talk about this kind of position, there should be some, there should be some balance, the people that you select and try to cover most part of the council districts, so we can get put from there.
Well, the legislation requires that the folks come from, with regard to location, each police district. And so what you'll find is, I don't, every police district isn't represented today merely because each, because of COVID, we were, we were actually planning to do this back in March and February, which is when we first started, you know, this whole present, excuse me, process of selecting individuals. But then COVID happened, like literally the week before we were gonna do this work. And following that, there was, you know, the election and things like that. So it had been a lot of time that, or a lot of other things that kind of took precedent over, over doing this work. So we ended up actually losing a couple people. What we, but the goal is going to be moving forward again, is to fulfill the requirements of the, of the legislation, which is ensuring that each police district is represented, and then that those individuals, you know, we want to, we want to fill the board in its entirety, including those other positions that the legislation requires. So I do understand what you're saying with regard to having each city council district, but what, but the goal wasn't necessarily that each council district get represented, but rather each police district admin.
That's fine, but when you get to the nominees, he doesn't know exactly what police district they call us, so I have a better understanding. Three police districts. So when we get to those things, if it's possible, he tells what police districts they coming from.
Councilman, I just want to recap what I think you said, and if you could just confirm for everybody that you were saying that you had multiple police districts in your district, and therefore you want to just make sure that as we are going through, if those individuals, if there are individuals who represent a specific district, you want to know which one that is, correct?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, this, these are the nominees, and yes, they're, they don't represent every council district, but these are eleven out of twenty-three representatives total that will be on this commission. So I think we need to address any gaps in terms of council districts with the other people who will be appointed to this commission, because I've read every, I know we all have every single one of the nominees presentations, and I'm blown away, impressed, that basically how well the candidates we have here today match the criteria of all the will be, you know, what is expected of the, the, the commission. It's, yeah, it's a commission, what's expected of the commission in terms of being able to identify deficits and fix them in terms of relationships between police and the community, but also those, those members of the community with special needs and special conditions, and it's a, it's a beautiful match when you read the resume. So let, let's be on with it and make up the difference with the other. I mean, it's twenty-three people on the commission. Let's make sure we touch all the right bases when we fill in the rest. Right now, we've got a good crew, real good. On with the show.
All right, on with the show. All right, so Tyler Adamson was unable to attend and will be rescheduled to come before the committee at a later date. We will hear from the first three nominees in this order. Mona Lisa Diallo, Dominic Flowers, and Phyllis Gilmore. The committee would like each of you to state your name, tell us your background, interest in the, an interest in the position, and share your vision for the commission, and after you finish your presentation, committee members may have a few questions for you. So with that, we can start with Mona Lisa.
Morning, everyone. My name is Mona Lisa Diallo. I am from the Western District, Seventh Council, Seventh Council District.
We can hear you, but we need you to move, go ahead, Councilman.
Vice Chair, you can mute it.
No, I was saying, you're, yeah, you're mute, you're, it's kind of coming in static. It could be your Bluetooth connection. I get that problem sometimes.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're coming in clear.
Okay. I don't know what happened. Now the mic went off. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Mona Lisa Diallo. I'm from the Western District, the Western Police District, the Seventh City Council District. I have lived in Baltimore. I was born in Baltimore. I left Baltimore in nineteen eighty-three, traveled around the world, decided to move back in nineteen ninety-seven. When I moved back to nineteen ninety-seven, I was a single mother, trying to find a job, found a job, raised my three children in the Park Heights area. Found it very difficult to raise my sons in Baltimore. They had a lot of police interaction. I decided to be more visible and vocal and understand my community and the deficits in my community as well as assets. In two thousand and fifteen, during the uprising, I decided to purchase my first home. I decided to look at a home that was in an area that was directly impacted by the uprising and other issues that have to do with the economics of Baltimore and the forward thinking of Baltimore. So I decided to move right down the street from Mondamen. I bought a house. We purchased a house here, and it was an area that was laden with a lot of drug traffic. I decided to work with my neighborhood community services as well as immediately, the first two weeks of moving in here in two thousand and eighteen, and work with the police. I worked with Major Webb as well as four different neighborhood associations in the area. Met many allies from Ms. Barbara on Ark and Trolley to Mario Chang on the corner owner of the Gear of Variety. Made some really good networking happen here. And at that time, I met Antonio Hayes. Antonio Hayes asked me to be on his community liaison for the nine districts under GMCC, which is the Greater Mondamen Coordinating Committee. I worked with then-President Jackie Codwell and now Barbara Anderson, not Barbara Anderson, Ms. Coleman. Ms. Adeline, excuse me, Ms. Adeline. So we've worked together. I've identified some issues in the community. I've had several, several encounters with our neighborhood associations, as I stated before, and trying to find out how we can work with the police as well as build communities and support our communities in many, many ways. So one reason why I decided to put my name in terms of the nomination, I read through the consent decree, the, the day it came out, the all two hundred and seventy-seven pages, and, and understanding the First, the Fourth, and the Fourteenth Amendment and how the police came to the, to the agreement with the United States Federal Justice Department in building this and in addressing the fact that many citizens in Baltimore were denied those rights from the Fourth, the First, the Fourth, and the Fourteenth Amendment. It made me want to be a part of the process, not just talk about it, but actually be able to identify from a mother's perspective, from a grandmother, I'm a grandmother of seven, as well as I've been an educator in Baltimore County for twenty-three years. So I bring a lot of valuable information in terms of those three dynamics and those three demographics. And I just, I'm honored to place my name in a hat, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for considering me.
Awesome. Thank you, and thank you for your service to the city of Baltimore. Are there questions from, from the committee? Let's see if I see any hands raised. Okay. All right, hearing, no question. Again, thank you for your willingness to serve. Definitely appreciate it, and for all of you. I'm always thankful for the folks willing to take on these positions and bring that, your lifelong expertise to help out in the city of Baltimore. Lord knows, we need all hands on deck, so thank you all for that. And thank you for opening with such a powerful story in your background.
May I say one thing, please? My name is Diallo. The D is pronounced as a J.
Okay, sorry about that. They don't give us anything with the abbreviation on it, so I'm often missing out people's names. I'm sorry if I do that.
No, no.
All right, our next nominee is Dominique Flowers.
Good morning, committee. My name is Dominique Flowers. First and foremost, I appreciate you for inviting me to speak before you. I also appreciate your selection for me as a nominee. I come from the Southwest Police District, the Eighth Councilman of District under Councilman Burnett. To give you a little background of myself, I'm actually from Prince George's County. Professionally, I'm a lawyer. I've been practicing for ten years. I started in private practice as a civil litigator, some minor criminal work, bankruptcy work. Currently, I work for the Social Security Administration. I've been with them for close to ten years now. Prior to moving to Baltimore City, stepping back from it, I actually attended school in Baltimore. I was at, attended Coppin State College and went to University of Baltimore. That's actually my first experience working with the police department. I was an intern with the MT Police Department, and I was able to write their standard operating procedures for the department. So that, that was my first kind of real experience working with the police department. Following that, I went and graduated from college, went to law school. I attended the Citizens Police Academy in Prince George's County, graduated there, that really got me involved in, you know, seeing what the community involving with police and the interaction between officers and the community and seeing some of these best practices put in the play. After graduating from law school, I had the experience to work with police departments as an intern with the State's Attorney's Office. I was a criminal investigator in Virginia. Currently, I've been in Baltimore for three years, and in that three years, I've worked with Councilman Burnett on several initiatives when it comes, when it comes to Human Trafficking Subcommittee. Currently, I'm on the board for the Uplands HOA Homeowners Association, so that's really given me an idea of what Baltimore is like when it comes to working with the police department. I've been able to meet with a number of the commanders in the Southwest District, inviting them to our community, working with them, inviting them to our meetings, speaking with them. I've also worked on with Baltimore Rising, which is an initiative that was brought up by three of the council members to really bridge that gap between the community and getting some initiative out when it comes to voting rights. I think my biggest, I guess one initiative I'd like to push is the misconception when it comes to police departments and disconnect between the police department and the community. I've found that a lot, a lot of the times, the community is not aware of some of the procedures that police officers have to follow when it comes to search and seizure or protocol, or when there's brutality allegation made or complaint. And I think we need to work on bridging that gap, opening up channels of communication with the community. One initiative would be a Citizens Police Academy. I know I've spoken with some of the district commanders about that motto, and I think they said that it's something that they've been interested in, and I think I heard there was something like that in the past, but it's not really on the ground yet, so that might be one way we can kind of bridge that gap. Certainly going through the consent decree, making sure people understand what that means, what's in the consent decree, what that dictates, what the police department has to follow. Also looking ahead, once the consent decree ends, what, what's Baltimore like? What are we looking at for it? So just kind of bringing everyone to the table and having that conversation. I enjoy it. I think it's great. And again, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the committee, members of the committee? That usually means y'all are covering all the bases. Thank you. All right. Phyllis Gilmore.
Good morning, committee. My name is Phyllis Gilmore, and apparently, rather than Baltimore.
Phyllis, I'm sorry.
You hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. It's just coming in. Yeah, it sounds like the same issue. Are you logging on more than one device? Your cell phone. Yeah, unfortunately. Is everyone out there in that? Sorry, just making sure. If you, if you'd like, we could maybe try to come back if you want to like log out and log in.
Okay.
Let's do that. Okay, next on the list, I have Angela Holland.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Am I choppy at all?
No, you're coming in clear.
And for some reason, the screen is reversed, the camera is reversed, so it's going to get my wall versus my face. But I'll continue. Good morning. My name's Angela Holland, and I am super excited to be here, excited for the impossible opportunity, and just ready to do the work. I am from New Jersey originally. I moved to Baltimore for graduate school, have been here for over the last fifteen years, and I'm in the Southern District, so Pictown area. So my passion has always been working with children, families. I've worked in the juvenile justice system. My background is criminal justice and then also a master's in nonprofit business administration. So my whole life has been around helping and helping and trying to support and offering options for people to feel safe in the communities where they live. So the reason that I applied for this nomination was because I really believe that we can have communities that have positive and safe interactions with police. I believe it's doable. Do I, I understand there's a systematic issue, but I do believe that as a smaller group, we can start making those changes in our own neighborhood. And I just really want to come to the table with some of my experience as far as criminal justice, my experience in building relationships, my experience in bridging institutions with, with community members so they feel trusted and understood, and just really looking forward to doing the work that needs to be done. We have a big task ahead of us, but I do believe that Baltimore can be a safe city, and I believe that we can have positive interactions with the police. So again, I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. I do apologize. I'll try to flip my camera before the end of the meeting. But again, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you and hopefully receive the nomination.
Thank you. And if you're having issues with video, just as an aside, if you, at the bottom of your screen, there's, there's a little button that says stop video, but next to it is a downward facing arrow. If you click on that, you'll see something that says settings, and then you can click on camera settings, and maybe play with that to see if it helps. There we go. Okay.
Guys, hello.
It's your neighborhood tech support here.
I appreciate that so much.
No worries. All right, are there questions for Miss Holland from the committee? I saw her hand go up. Mary Pat, did you have a question? Okay.
Don't have, I don't have a question, and I would like to say on behalf of us, or at least myself, there's a lot of people that need to be heard this morning, and I think we're kind of, we're listening, and we don't want to hold up things too much with a lot of questions. It's not that we're not interested. It's just there's a lot of you wonderful nominees, and we want to make sure that we all get on. Maybe then we'll have some questions, but we want to hear from everyone.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes, you have something?
Yeah, I just have a comment, and I know we talked about it earlier. And Councilwoman Mary Pat talked about it and other people. Just a comment, I don't see no young people on this nomination because they're the one that have the interaction with police. So just a suggestion, we need to look at some of the young people in the, in the community and make sure they be a part of this. Be nominated, be on this, this actual program, because that's so important that we do have adults. But the young people that want to have the interaction with police, and just a suggestion, just to Kaylin, that we add some young people to this. Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Young, you had a response?
Actually requires that there is a youth representative on this, on this committee, excuse me, commission. Unfortunately, as a result of, again, the time change from when we started this process to now, you know, we, we unfortunately lost a couple people, and that included the youth advocates. So the goal is to have at least one youth advocate on this mission in future.
Okay, thank you. Just a suggestion. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young, like you, for raising that issue, Councilmember Stokes. I agree. Definitely need to have the voice of the youth on, on this as well. I'll look forward to a future nomination hearing with them. Next on my list, I have Derek Johnson.
Greetings. This is Derek Johnson. I reside in Seventh City Council District, Central Police District. To this, to this committee, I will bring a wealth of knowledge in Human Services Administration work. Been in human services for over ten years. Currently, I am employed with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City as a family self-sufficiency support service coordinator, and I'm also employed on a contract with the Mayor's Office of Homeland Services as the Emergency Services Associate, basically just running the homeless referral hotline. I've lived in Baltimore all my life, born and raised Baltimore County. I've been a resident of Baltimore City for the past five years. And in that time, I've just been heavily centralized, you know, focused on community engagement aspects, which I think, you know, if not aggressively and properly, will at least address the root causes of some of Baltimore's problems. And, you know, so my background just includes, you know, I've been, you know, volunteering for certain political candidates since 2017 to include Felicia Porter and Dr. Bilal Ali, who was our state delegate at one point. I've done youth mentorship with the Embodied Program. And I'm also politing a nonprofit called The Flowers Wedding Initiative, which focus would be to address, you know, wraparound services with the hopes of eventually, you know, eventually mitigating or eliminating recidivism amongst our returning citizens in Baltimore. And then just why I just think, you know, I would be a good fit for the commission is just that the evidence of between the relationship between the community and Baltimore City Police, which we know have deteriorated over time. And me being an individual who believes in community engagement, I believe that I can provide specific contributions, meaningful suggestions for equitable and efficient police work in the city. So hopefully y'all see fit to nominate me for the commission. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tiffany Jones.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Oh, good morning. My name is Tiffany Jones. I'm from the Second Council District, I'm in the Northeast Police District. And the reason why I would love to be on this Public Safety Commission is because I'm dedicated to truth and justice. I've always have been. And I believe that the city deserves and needs healing and this is the way to do it. I've been a resident of Baltimore City my whole life. I'm from East Baltimore, Port Street. And Councilman Stokes talked about youth being at the table, which is true because even though I'm 37, I'm bringing a youth in me to the table. My first experience with the police, I was seven years old. And me and my sisters were sitting in the steps and the police tried to arrest her. And my father had to run outside because he was a community advocate and they knew him. And he had to make sure that they knew that my sister lived with us. But after that, you know, I believed in officer friendly, but officer friendly wasn't so friendly anymore. So, and that affected me. And I think a lot of us have post-traumatic issues with policing. And I believe in bridging this, this gap between officers in the community. But it's going to take all of us to do that. It takes all of us to do that. And in order for it to be successful, we have to hold BPD accountable. And my background is doing that, is holding them accountable, is investigating police misconduct. I've been a part of Baltimore City Women's Commission Public Safety Committee, where we've had, we've worked with women, you know, in that way with public safety. So I'm dedicating you and in me, you will find someone who's dedicated to justice and to healing. And that's what we need in the city. And in order for residents to believe in us, we have to show that the system works and our system is honest. And so that's, that's all I have to say. You have my resume. I don't know if you want me to do a rundown on my background, but I'm very dedicated to this role and I appreciate the opportunity and I hope to be confirmed for it. And thank you so much.
Thank you. You hit some great points. Are there questions for the nominee? Okay, I do appreciate us trying to move through because I know y'all all have busy days today as well. But thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve as well. All right, so the last round of nominees, we were here in this order. Kai Overton, Kayla Randolph, Samantha Salesman, and Carlton Smith. Again, please state your name, tell us about your background and interests. We do have your resume, so you don't have to, you don't have to walk through that. Thank you for raising that. We did receive those ahead of the hearing. All right, so first up, Kai Overton.
Hello, everyone. Kai Overton. I'm a resident of the Seventh District, which puts me in the Central District for BPD. Professionally, I am the Program Coordinator of the Police Youth Challenge Program, which is a community engagement program brought in collaboration with BPD, where we focus on building and rebuilding youth and community interactions with the police department. I run that out of an organization called Chesapeake Bay Hour Bound School. We're based in Leaking Park in southwest Baltimore. Also, over the last few years, I've done a lot of work, working with BPD and their Compliance Bureau formulating training, specifically their community policing training, that they're looking to debut to all sworn officers in May of 2021. Personally, I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore City, born and raised here. I've lived in the city and the county throughout my entire life. And what drew me to this specific line of work were the events of 2015 and just looking to focus on repairing a connection between the youth and the community in Baltimore and the police officers. Because I feel that these are all important pillars of the community and that right now is the time to strengthen them and to keep them strengthened as well. What I can bring to this commission is an increased look into those connections, specifically how we can put officers and members of the community in spaces where they can have equitable conversations, solution-oriented conversations about how they can truly both affect and create solutions for the community of Baltimore. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Overton? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Overton. Okay, next, I was trying to find the list. Next up, I have Kayla Randolph.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. My name is Kayla Randolph and I live in the Seventh City Council District. And I believe I'm with the Baltimore Police Department Western District. So I am a Baltimore transplant. I moved to Baltimore City in 2016. I was born and raised in New Jersey and completed law school in Florida. So my background, I won't run through my resume either, but my background is international human rights and humanitarian law, so specifically dealing with human rights issues. So for the last eight years, I've worked for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services. In my current capacity, I deal with policy advisement, dealing with immigrants who have committed human rights violations. And then prior to that, I specifically worked with refugees and asylum seekers, so victims of human rights abuses. So what I intend to, what I intend to do with the committee or the commission, if I am confirmed, is I essentially applied for this nomination because I wanted to take my policy advising and technical guidance writing and apply that to Baltimore City issues and get involved with my local community. We all know what happened in 2015. And so that is, that was my purpose in applying for the position, was I wanted to work with the city and using those skills and really acknowledging that these are both civil and human rights issues in terms of law enforcement abuses and changing that perspective. So that is why I applied and I hope to be confirmed. And thank you for the nomination.
Thank you. And thank you for your willingness to serve as always. All right, are there questions for Randolph from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. And we have Samantha Salesman.
Good morning, everyone. How are you? My name is Samantha Salesman. Are you guys hearing me? Are you hearing me?
Yes, I can hear you clearly.
Yeah, I just got a feedback. I live in the District Five city area and I believe my police district is northwest. Currently, I'm a Program Director in mental health capacity. I have served on a Health Worker Commission Advisory Board. One of my interests in this commission is because I've served within the community as an educator, as well as a community health worker, where I've had to work and advocate to educate a lot of the community members as well as to help with the various needs of health as well as resources. I've had the capacity to help with bridging some of the healthcare needs that they've had as it relates to seeing a PCP, as well as even to finding resources such as housing. What actually sparked my interest to this committee was that I realized that currently as I'm working in mental health, I realized that there's a need to address trauma in the community. There's a need to bridge the issues of trauma as it relates to not just on a mental health aspect, but also within the law enforcement. And I believe that at present, there is a need for the city of Baltimore to come together to bridge that, to address, you know, what are some traumatic issues that may be affecting the community? How can we, not just in healthcare, but as in the legal aspect of it, address such issues? I believe with my commission that I sit on as well for healthcare workers, one of the things we've been advocating for is to bridge the needs of persons in the community that do not have a PCP or do not have access to healthcare. So I believe if I sit on this commission as well, one of the things I would like to address and to help with is to bridge in that need or the need to address trauma, not just within the community, but also within the law enforcement, as well as to have a relationship, as well as have persons to see how can we address this? How can we help the community with not just the trauma, but also to build relationships and what reinforcements? What inputs can we have as it relates to developing a community that could understand that the trauma does exist within the community and that it's something that could be worked on? So that was my reason for applying to sit on this commission to help with bridging some of the traumatic needs within the Baltimore City community.
Thank you. Are there questions from the committee? Councilmember Cohen?
First off, just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone that stepped forward. Want to just quickly say to Ms. Salesman, completely agree with the need for trauma-informed care. We passed a law in 2019, the Healing City Act, that mandates all city government become trauma-informed. We are getting ready to set up our own commission on that as well. And I would just say that, given your interest and your passion and the sort of intersection between mental health and public safety, would love to get you involved, either formally or informally, in some of the work there as well. And I think that this commission and the other one can really partner in a very strong way. So would love to connect at some point. And really glad to hear that pushing trauma-informed care within, particularly within law enforcement, is a passion of yours. So appreciate your nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we're going to go to Carlton Smith.
Yes, good morning, Councilman Burnett and others. Thank you for the nomination of this Public Safety Advisory. I'm, I live in the 12th District. I am the, I'm currently serving as the Police Chaplain as well. I also live in, I live in the 12th District, I'm sorry. My, I'm not as a morning person as you can see. But I, I live in 12th Central is my district. I currently am a Police Chaplain. I also am a member and commission member of the LGBT Commission. I have also served in the public as the co-chair, as the Chair of the Greater Baltimore HIV Health Service Planning Council Chair. I'm currently working for the State of Maryland as a community health worker. I believe in this resource that we shouldn't work in silos, but work together as a community. There's a lot to learn from each and every one of how we are infused in various ways. Not only is my background in public health, but it's also in public service and public policy. I've been a part of many commissions prior to this. And right now, I also serve at the Police LGBT Advisory Committee as well. And I continue, it's not so much my, it's my passion to help our community, but more so to bring justice and equality to all citizens. And this is one of the reasons why I'm part of the commission. And I've been part of the Police Commiss, LGBT Commission in talking about the consent decree due prior to when Mayor Catherine Q had involved a lot of other community people. And we, as a committee, decided to be a part of this as well. And to also bring change and help people understand the LGBT community because we're here to stay. And sometimes transgender people are not getting their equality in housing. And they also being, and our young people are being harassed by the police and not, and we just want to make sure laws are equat, is, that the laws are fair to everyone and that people are not being abused or picked out or selected because of, or discriminated against because of who they are. And we are all children of God. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the word. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, this is, I definitely appreciate you. You're, I've been on, I don't know which commission you're not on at this point. You continue to serve and so that's definitely appreciated. I did want to thank you. I did want to go back. Is Phyllis Gilmore? I don't know if, I don't see Phyllis Gilmore on the list, but I didn't, I didn't, I know she was trying to log back in. Okay, I do feel you're on the list now. Can you, are you able to hear me, Phyllis?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, and you're coming in perfect. We can hear you. All right, floor is yours.
Good morning, Commission. Again, my name is Phyllis Gilmore. I am a representative of the Fourth District Council District, which is Bill Henry's Council District. I am a lifelong resident of Baltimore City. I lived in Baltimore City all my life. I'm right now a part of like 20, 25-plus community associations under New York Road Partnership, which is located in North Baltimore. It's a umbrella group that focused with a number of organizations on different aspects. I sit on many committee boards, public safety, business engagement, youth development. I am also a member of the Um, I am also a member of the Women's Commission under a Women in Leadership Committee. Um, I I I want to tap on, I, as I sit here and I think of the uprising that we had in Baltimore, and tapping into the the trauma and and grief of our youth and looking, looking at how they um really uh presented theirself, you know, during that uprising. Um, I've been a lifelong member of um public servant for over twelve years. I've been advocating through Baltimore City with a number of different neighborhood associations and um building. Um, right now, I am working deeply and heavily with the North District Police Department under Major Gibson um to improve and to build the building blocks of building relationships between community and um the police department. Um, um, I am very dedicated into and improving community building, community relationships, um, to bring in the resources that our youth needs um to have them thrive, um, which is um educational aspects, resources in the community. Um, and I, and I think that, you know, I have worked hard within my own community, which our community was very devastated at one point, and I have been the president of this association for five years, and I was able to transform this community into a community now that is thriving, that is um, you know, limited in crime, you know, the community is very engaged. And, you know, I hope that, you know, you will, um, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Um, I hope that you will allow me to sit on this commission board to bring more vision into what we can do as a whole-together um community at community, district by district, to bring in the aspects of bringing more safety within Baltimore City. Um, I I am, I am very a dedicated person, and, you know, my work speaks for itself. Um, and, you know, I hope that you will, um, I hope that you will, um, um, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. Um, allow.
You're doing good. You're doing fine.
I hope that you will allow me to sit as a um a commissioner for this um public safety commission.
Alright, thank you. And thank you for your service and and hard work in the community. Um, are there questions uh from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Um, again, that that, well, that concludes our uh all of the nominees. Um, I want to, again, thank you all um for all of your hard work. I I mean, as you all heard today, there's a lot of diverse set of experiences, work experience, volunteer work. Uh, but I think the common thread is uh everybody has involved in a whole lot of stuff when it comes to advocating for community, advocating for our young people, invulnerable um uh residents here in Baltimore. So I just do want to thank all of you for your willingness to serve on this very important uh commission. Um, it it is not lost on us that this is a a volunteer effort for you, and you may wear a whole bunch of hats, your family, your job, and community work, and balancing all of that. And so we do thank you for your service. Um, it is definitely appreciated, and and thank you for bringing your expertise uh to the city of Baltimore. Um, we will now move to public testimony. For those who are assigned and use a computer, uh, please use the raise hand function to indicate you wish to testify, and we'll start with you. And then we will go through any of the users who have called into the hearing, attendees who uh cannot, will not be, if you called in, we won't know you by name. Uh, and so you'll be unmuted one by one by the committee staff. Uh, you'll hear two beeps when you're unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. Uh, and if you don't want to provide testimony, just uh simply uh let us know that you, after you get the two beeps, that you don't intend to testify. So I'm gonna hand it over to uh Marguerite Curran to walk us through this.
Mr. Chair, there are no call-ins and no one raised their hand.
Okay, alright, we can move, we can move to uh vote. Alright, so is there a, that it's not gonna go in the the same order that you all? Oh, cool, I guess I can try. Um, is there a motion to uh recommend Mona 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 Lisa Jalloh? Jalloh? Sorry, I butchered again, my apologies. Uh, there's motion, motion by Stokes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by uh uh Clark. Uh, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes is a yes. Uh, Chris Burnett, I am a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes. Oh, oops.
We got you. We hear you. Councilmember Clark is a yes. Uh, Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cohen is a yes. Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Hey, uh, so the, actually, I'm just gonna walk through all of these, and then we'll, we'll, we'll finish the script that way. Alright, uh, is there a motion to recommend Dominique Flowers?
So move by Councilwoman Stokes.
Move by.
Second, Clark.
Second by Clark. Uh, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes is a yes. Uh, Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Cohen is a yes. Uh, Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer is a yes. Is there a motion to recommend Phyllis Gilmore?
So move by Councilwoman.
Second.
Move by Stokes, second by Clark. Uh, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes is a yes. Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark is a yes. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Cohen is a yes. Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer is a yes. Is there a motion to recommend Angela Holland?
So move by Councilwoman Stokes.
Clark, second.
Move by Stokes, second by Clark. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes is a yes. Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark is a yes. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cohen is a yes. Councilmember Slifer?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Slifer is a yes. Uh, is there a motion to recommend Derek Johnson?
So move by Councilwoman Stokes. Second, Clark.
Move by Stokes, second by Clark. Uh, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark is a yes. Councilmember Cohen? Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cohen is a yes. Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer is a yes. Uh, is there a motion to recommend Tiffany Jones?
So move by Councilwoman Stokes.
Second, Clark.
By Stokes, second by Clark. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer? Okay, uh, is there a motion to recommend Kai Overton?
So move by Councilwoman.
Second, Clark.
Alright, move by Stokes, second by Clark. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Uh, Burnett is a yes. Stokes is a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, is there a motion to recommend uh Kayla Randolph?
So move by Councilwoman.
Kyla, yes, Mary Pat.
Alright, move by, second by Clark. Uh, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Chris Burnett is a yes. Uh, Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cohen is a yes. Councilmember Slifer? Councilmember, Councilmember Slifer is a yes. Uh, is there a motion to recommend Samantha Salesman?
So move by Councilwoman.
Yes.
Move by Stokes, second by Clark.
Well, I think that um my colleague would like to second this one. Uh, from the fifth. Sure, from the fifth.
We all second.
Thank you.
Okay, um, second by Slifer. Uh, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes is a yes. Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark is a yes. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Cohen is a yes. Uh, Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Slifer is a yes. Is there a motion to recommend Carlton Smith?
So move by Councilwoman Stokes. Second, Clark.
Second by Clark. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is a yes. Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes.
Cohen is a yes. Uh, Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer is a yes. All motions have passed. The committee will recommend a favorable report for all nominees. The nominations will be placed on second reader on Monday, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty. The full council will review and take a vote at that time. On behalf of the mayor and city council of Baltimore, I would like to thank all of you for your willingness to give your time and efforts to serve the citizens of Baltimore. And if there is no other business, the committee is now adjourned. Thank you all. Enjoy the rest of your day and have a good afternoon.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, committee.
Thank you. Thank you.